Good evening. Welcome to the December fourteenth regular meeting for the Vineland Board of Education. Roll call please, Ms. Haley.
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Mr. Boardley?
Here.
Ms. Cottis Potty?
Present.
Mr. Jennings?
Present.
Mr. Pagano?
Here.
Ms. Rios?
Present.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. DeWinnie?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following: announcing time and place thereof, agenda etc., The Daily Journal, The Press of the Atlantic City, The Grapevine, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, please rise for the flag salute. We will be led this evening by class presidents from Vineland High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some certificates for you, so please wait. Ms. Acosta will be handing them And thank you for doing this flag salute this evening. It's always a pleasure seeing you.
I know many of you have something else in the other building, so thank you for fitting this into your schedule.
tomorrow it's going to be about twenty-one degrees, so enjoy it. Mrs. Haley, do we have a resolution for executive session this evening?
No, we do not.
All righty. Dr. Gruccio, special presentations this evening.
We do. We have a few. I would first like to call forward the senior class president, Gracie Galan, and she's going to be giving an update report.
Hi. I won't be too long, I promise. I have a choir concert in like thirty minutes. Okay, so this past weekend, the senior class won the X Factor competition at VHS. And basically, how we do it is fifty percent of the proceeds go to the class with the highest score, and then fifty percent of the proceeds are divided. So twenty-five goes to the class who sold the most tickets in advance, and twenty-five goes to the class that sold the most at the door. So we won all of that. Snowball was this past Saturday, and over two hundred students attended this dance at the VHS South Gym from seven to ten PM. It was a fun and entertaining night with lots of great food and music. The boys' basketball first varsity home game is December twentieth, JV at four-thirty and varsity at six. You can come see me on the cheer team. Interact gift wrapping is this weekend at the Cumberland Mall, and that will benefit Hadassa, which is a cancer research service, and sixty VHS students will be doing service. I'll be working Sunday if you want to come get your gift wrapped by me. NHS has adopted a family for the holidays, so we're collecting toys and donations for that family. Our winter spirit week will be next week, so Monday is College Day, Tuesday is Twin Day, Wednesday is Ugly Sweater Day, Thursday is Throwback Thursday, and Friday is Spirit Day. So just some events coming up. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, comments for Ms. Galan?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'd like to call forward Mr. Ernie Bernhardt from Vineland High School. And we are going to be recognizing our athletic teams, or some of our athletic teams, and honor them for their achievements in various sports during the fall season. Thank you, Ernie, for being here.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ernie Bernhardt. I'm a guidance counselor here in the North Building. I'm also a faculty manager for the Athletic Department, which entitles more on the academic coach side. My job has been for the past three years to try and coordinate coaches along with the grades for students, so it's a year-long process, and we're moving forward. This past fall, our average GPA for fall sports was a three-point-one-three, which is outstanding, above the average. Would really like to applaud the students, athletes, but also the coaches. The coaches have become very familiar with the process, working on Genesis, keeping a accurate GPA with each student, calling me when there's an issue, so they've been very involved. And it's not a seasoned coach anymore. It's a year-round coach, as many of you know. They do it completely the whole year. So, right now, I would like to, I'm going to call up some coaches that are going to actually talk about their student athletes that are going to receive some of these words tonight. The first coach I would like to call would be Mr. Dominic Massaro.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Massaro. I'm the head girls tennis coach and assistant boys tennis coach. And on behalf of Vince Luciano, who is the assistant girls tennis coach and head boys tennis coach, we would like to thank the Board of Education for validating our distinguished student athletes this evening. They do represent Vineland, Vineland High School in a positive way. And congratulations to all of the athletes tonight. Very quickly, Tess Fisher is being honored tonight. Tess is a junior, and she is the all-time winningest tennis, high school tennis player at Vineland High School. She surpassed Sean Steinhour with a hundred and nine victories, and Blake Pescator with an impressive eighty-eight victories. I promise you, it gets better. So stay seated. Her record after her junior year is one-hundred-and-fourteen victories to only three losses. And she probably has another forty matches or senior year scheduled ahead of her, so she may be the all-time state record holder with that. Very quickly, she has been three-time South Jersey Player of the Year, which is extremely impressive. That's all of South Jersey. Three-time Cape Atlantic League Singles Champion, two-time County Champion, along with other accolades. She was spotlighted in Sports Illustrated, and there are many other things that she has validated with. But the one thing that Mr. Luciano and I would like to really talk about very quickly with Tess is who she is. They say little things speak volumes, and she is an excellent representative of this. The little things that she does make such a big difference. She makes coaching so easy. She is probably one of the, one of the most distinguished athletes that I think Vince and I have ever coached. On a daily basis, we've played roughly sixty Cape Atlantic League matches. Each and every match, she will look up a different quote. She calls the hub team together in a huddle before pre-game, and she will read that quote that is related to whatever situation the team is in at that time. If we're playing well, if we had a bad match prior to. And you'll never find her on Court One. I mean, years past, you know, there's a, seems to be a hierarchy with players, you know, one plays on Court One, two is on Two. You'll never find her on Court One before a match. She's on the backcourts, assuming her, her leadership role as a captain, and she is hitting and working with our freshmen and sophomores. And she does that at practice also. So, I mean, I can go on and on. She is just a tremendous, tremendous young lady. And Vineland High School is so happy that she's here, and we want to wish her luck. She has one more year. She has a very important year coming up. One last thing she did, she was in the state championships three consecutive years, where she had an impressive run each year. Unfortunately, she did lose to the eventual state champion each of the three years she was there, which was very impressive. She has one more year for that. But we wish her, we wish her well, her last year in the state tournament, and she has some pretty big decisions to make, where she wants to attend school. So Tess, we wish you well.
Tess, could you please, please come up?
Tess, can you please come up? On behalf of the Vineland Board of Education, we are going to be presenting you with a certificate this evening. Congratulations to you, Tess, and the Fisher family, and the entire tennis program at VHS. Also, Mr. Boardley has a special letter that he would like to read as well. So, Mr. Boardley, please.
Reading this letter on behalf of Congressman Frank Lobiondo. He couldn't be here tonight. He expresses his deep regrets for that, but he asked me to read this letter. Dear Mr. Massaro, it has been brought to my attention that Ms. Tess Fisher has an astounding tennis achievement. Congratulations, Tess. Tess's accomplishments of being a three-time South Jersey Champion, a three-time Cape Atlantic League Champion, as well as a Cal All-Star, shows an outstanding commitment to the sport. Tess, you have shown with your hard work and dedication, you can be the best. Please present the enclosed certificate of special congressional recognition in honor of these accomplishments. Again, congratulations, and the best of luck next season. Sincerely, Frank Lobiondo.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to call the tennis coaches up, and I would like to have Mr. Fisher up as well, and if any of the other family members are here. Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Bernhardt?
Great job. Thank you. Prettiest one in the picture, Tess.
be here tonight, along with the two young ladies that have reached the girls soccer Cape Atlantic League All-Stars. So I just want to recognize Sarah Patronani and Alyssa Next, I'm going to introduce our crew coach for girls, Lou Tremontana.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the school board and the administration and our community for supporting the crew team through donations and funding. Without that, we wouldn't be where we are today. But tonight, we're here to honor Amanda Houlihan. She is signing, signed a four-year deal to row at Temple University in the sport of rowing. A little thing about Amanda, she just happened to tumble, stumble across this sport because of swimming. One of her swimming coaches said, hey, this would be a great cross trainer for you. And when she came out, we looked and said, oh, this is good. She looks like she's got great potential. She started urging, broke a few school records. Last year, she went to Boston for an indoor rowing contest, and out of three-hundred-and-some people, she finished twenty-second in her age group. And the great things just keep on happening. So we hope that when she gets to college, she'll keep bringing great things to our community, and I wish you a lot of luck.
I also would like to, once again, thank Coach Tremontana for the countless hours he puts in. Mega, being an ex-crew parent, mega hours this man puts in of his own time. And if anyone knows crew, it is a twenty-four-seven sport, and this man does a great job. So I just want to thank and acknowledge you, Lou. Ms. Houlihan's right up here, and Mr. Boardley has another letter to read, so please come.
Once again, Congressman Lobiondo, unable to make it, wanted me to present Amanda Houlihan with a special congressional recognition certificate for her achievements in rowing.
Houlihan family, come on up, please. Coach McCarty, I also, I didn't realize you were here, and thank you for all you do for Vineland Crew. Come on in.
player here, and now working at the high school that I actually graduated from, got a lot of pride. And speaking of the next guy that took over this football program, never met a coach that has the pride that Vineland needs, and I think he's proved it the last four years. So I'd like to introduce Coach Russo, and let's all give a round of applause,
On behalf of the Vineland Board of Education, we'd like to present him this evening with a special certificate of achievement. The certificate reads, certificate of achievement presented to Coach Dan Russo of the Vineland Public Schools in recognition of being named 2016-2017 High School Football Coach of the Year. We are very proud of your achievement and appreciate your hard work and commitment to the students, athletes of Vineland Public Schools. Thank you, Coach Russo. I also believe that Mr. Boardley has another letter to read. Thank you.
Coach Russo, on behalf of Congressman Lobiondo, I'll read you this letter. Dear Mr. Russo, I recently read in The Press of Atlantic City that you were named the Coach of the Year. Congratulations. Your commitment to your team and staff, Vineland High School and the city of Vineland are admirable. You have shown that with hard work and dedication, you can develop a football-community bond that enriches the lives of many. Please accept the enclosed certificate of special congressional recognition in honor of this special occasion. Again, congratulations, and the best of luck with next season. Sincerely, Frank Lobiondo.
I don't have a concert to go to, so it's going to take a little while. I've got a lot of people to thank. First of all, I'd like to thank my awesome players. Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate all you do. You know, I didn't have much to offer when I first got the job. It was a hard sell, but they bought into our vision, and they've done a fantastic job. And words cannot express how proud I am of them. It was a tough situation. History wasn't so good the last ten or fifteen years, and these guys threw a lot of negativity. They stuck together. We all stuck together, and we got the job done. So I appreciate it, guys. Great job. I'd like to thank my coaching staff. I've got a fantastic staff. I'm the guy out in front of it, but I couldn't do it without my coaches. I'd like to recognize them tonight, starting with my defensive line coach, Coach Guzman. Assistant coach, Coach Ecker. Defensive coordinator and linebacker coach, and also our strength and conditioning coach, who played in the NFL, Coach Clifton Smith. My fantastic offensive coordinator. The program set a record this year for most points scored in a season. Great job, Coach Volpe. The record was set in nineteen-eighty-four of two-hundred-and-ninety-two points. This year's team scored three-hundred-and-ninety-five points. Great job. And obviously, all the running backs and the skilled, the quarterback gets a lot of credit for the touchdowns, but our fantastic offensive line coach, who got our offensive line where they need to be, Coach Shifalaleo. Our number-one fan, Coach Markachi's in the house. Clap it up. Okay, I was lucky enough to become the head football coach at Vineland High School. Honored and privileged. And during that process, there was a committee, and I know one of the committee members is here tonight, Mr. Dale Elbuff. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Dr. Gruccio for the privilege of being the coach of Vineland High School. I feel very fortunate every day. Thank you so much. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for your support as well. Thank you so much. Couldn't do it without you. I'd like to recognize and thank Board President Scott English and Vice President Brian DeWinnie for their years of service. I believe this is your last meeting, right?
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service. The players wouldn't be able to do a lot of things. They've got wonderful parents and guardians. Can we have a big round of applause for the parents and guardians out here tonight? Thank you so much. I know we require a lot of time, you know, giving the players rides. It's a tough schedule, and I appreciate all you do for our program. When I was lucky enough to get the job, the Board President was Mr. Eugene Medio. I'd like to thank him also for his support. He's here tonight. Thank you so much. Any job on a daily basis, you have to be accountable. And there is an assessment process. You're assessed. So what I usually don't share with everyone, and I'd like to share with you tonight, is something I keep close to me, and a lot of my players haven't even heard this, but you have to show improvement and progress. So what I'd like to go over tonight with everyone here, if you could be patient, and a lot of you math people are going to like this, is the point differential from year one to year four against some of our opponents. And I'd like to go over that right now. I keep it in my pocket on my cellphone close to me, because I like to assess myself on a daily basis. So, our blueprint, number one, was to keep the Vineland football players in the Vineland Public Schools, and we were lucky enough to do that. Number two, we wanted to develop the players into student athletes. A lot of kids don't realize at the lower levels, at the midget ball levels, that they have to get good grades. There's no accountability down there, but then when they come to the high school, there is, because it's a state law. So we wanted to develop them into student athletes. Number three, win some football games. We're starting to see some progress, and we're winning some football games. And a lot of people say, hey, you know, we're eight and two. That's great. That shows improvement. Number four, we'd like to get our players to the next level, college, and hopefully someday in the NFL. Our first year, we had Jamil Demby, full athletic scholarship, University of Maine. Second year, Jeremiah Toki, full athletic scholarship to Temple. Third year, Donovan Bennett went to Gettysburg College, a very prestigious school on an academic scholarship. And last year, we had Robert Blakely. He attends Fairleigh Dickinson on academic scholarship as well. So far this year, we have a lot of colleges in every day, two or three, sometimes four. It's hard to juggle, but we want our players going to college, playing at the next level. I'm happy to announce Isaiah Pacheco, as a junior, has been offered a full athletic scholarship to Rutgers University. Stand up, Isaiah. Great job. Okay. They're beating down the door for Nahim Anderson as well, Noah Sansone. We should have a lot of full scholarships coming from our school in the near future. They're doing an excellent job. We have some players this year getting a lot of looks, senior Jared Banks and Daquan Cosby have a lot of nice schools looking at them as well. So our players know how important the academic piece is. The first thing the coaches ask when they come to Vineland High School is, hey, Coach, do they have grades? If I say yes, they stay a while, and we discuss the player. If I say, I'm sorry, Coach, they don't have the grades, they walk right out. So it's very important, that academic piece, and we stress it. Okay, now for the fun part. A lot of you math types will like this, all right? So, our VHS football assessment, this senior class, the seniors that came in, ground zero their first year. First year, we played Middletownship. They beat us thirty-five, thirty-four. Year three, we beat them thirteen, seven. That's a plus, I'm sorry, that's a twenty-to-six we beat them. That's a plus-fifteen improvement. Ocean City, our first year, beat us twenty-one, seven. Year three, we beat them thirteen, seven. Plus twenty. This is where it gets fun. Absagami had beaten us eleven in a row. They beat us our first year fifty-two to twenty-eight. Year three, we beat them twenty-five, seven. Plus forty-three point improvement. Bridston, our first year, Homecoming, really stung me. They ran it up on us. Beat us fifty-one to zero, year one. This year, we beat them seven-zero at their place on their turf. Plus fifty-eight point improvement. Egg Harbor, we hadn't beaten them since two thousand and three. They beat us our first year twenty-seven to twelve. We beat them this year thirty-seven to seven. Plus forty-five point improvement for Vineland. Atlantic City had beaten us nine out of the last ten times. They beat us our first year thirty-two, twelve. This year, we beat them thirty-five, seven at our Homecoming. Plus forty-eight point improvement. Mainland, we hadn't beaten since nineteen-eighty-nine. Nineteen-eighty-nine. I think that was my, I was in eighth grade. Wow, long time ago. I'm an old man. They beat us our first year fifty-four to twenty. This year, we beat them fifty to six. Plus seventy-eight point improvement. I've saved the best one for last. Milwood had beaten us seven in a row. Our first year here, they beat us fifty-five to eight. We beat them this year forty-five, twenty-eight. Plus sixty-four point improvement. In those eight games, it's a plus 371 points better as a football program. Great job, Violin. 46.3 points better per game from year one to year four. So as you can see, the blueprint is working. The kids are staying at Violin. They're doing all the right things. They're working hard on and off the field, and I'm extremely proud of them. Our future is very bright. The freshman team was 6-2 and 1. We had three freshmen go to JV, and the JV team was 8 and 1, and the varsity was 8 and 2. So words cannot express how proud I am of these boys. Players win games, coaches manage them, and we have the players. I'm blessed to have great players and a great staff, and I thank you so much. At this time, what we're gonna do is we're gonna recognize our all-conference and all-South Jersey players.
Okay, on behalf of the Violin Board of Education, we are honoring our students, and we also have honored certificates from Mr. Lobiondo as well. So we will be calling up Nahim Anderson.
On behalf of Congressman Lobiondo, Nahim Anderson, this is in recognition of your outstanding football in Cape Atlantic League All-Stars and first-team All-South Jersey achievements.
We have Robert Kling.
Once again, on behalf of Congressman Lobiondo, certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Robert Kling in recognition of your outstanding football Cape Atlantic League All-Star achievement.
We have number one, Isaiah Pacheco.
On behalf of Congressman Lobiondo, the certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Isaiah Pacheco in recognition of your outstanding football Cape Atlantic League All-Star achievement.
This is a great name. I love this kid. Noah Sansaloon.
On behalf of Congressman Lobiondo, the certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Noah Sansaloon in recognition of your outstanding football Cape Atlantic League All-Star achievement.
We have Devon Seymour.
On behalf of Congressman Lobiondo, the certificate of special congressional recognition is presented to Devon Seymour in recognition of your outstanding football Cape Atlantic League All-Star achievement.
We also have Jalen Ziegler, who could not be with us this evening, but he also was honored as well. We want to take pictures, and if you have any family members, if they would like to come up and join the picture as well, let's go for it. Great job.
We have a few more family members coming.
It's an honor and a great privilege as a Violin High School graduate, and a long-suffering VHS fan, to be able to present certificates of achievement to our coaches. First, Coach Russo. Defensive coordinator, Clifton Smith. Offensive coordinator, Jason Volpe. Defensive line coach, Jose Guzman. Offensive line coach, Sylvester Shilafio. I'm sorry, Shifalalio. Assistant coach, Alan Ecker. Not able to be with us tonight, but also being honored, assistant coach, Paul Lonergan. Assistant coach, Jason Dorsey. Assistant coach, Jim Echols. Quarterback coach, Chris Vizo. Wide receiver coach, Darrell Ford. And academic and discipline coach, Albert Porter.
On behalf of Congressman Lobiondo, he sends a certificate of special congressional recognition presented to the Violin High School football team in recognition of your successful and inspiring 2016 football season. Congratulations.
All right. All the know-me-know I love Violin football. As one of the founders of the Red and Gray Club, I'm happy to be leaving this board with a great winning program. I challenge you underclassmen. I'm gonna read the names of seniors, but I challenge the juniors, sophomores, freshmen, focus on your studies. It matters. And to come back here every year with the same amount of success or more than this team. Now, for the seniors, please come up here and get your certificate of achievement, which is from the Violin Public Schools for Outstanding Athletic Achievement in Football for the 2016-17 season. Great job. You have made us very proud. Jared Banks. Ray Sean Blakely. Daquan Cosby. Dylan Farinaccio. Ivan Hale. Robert Kling. Richard Lane. Devon Seymour. Daytrill Williams. Justin Young. Seniors who are not here, I'll read their names and give their certificates to Coach Russo. Jalen Ziegler. Lyndon Williams. Cash Phillips. And Vasilis Andrew Sopolis.
Grab it from the bottom. It's old. We just had it redone. Special thanks to Joe DeCrucio for refurbishing the trophy. Okay, the Violin Board of Education and Dr. Grusio were nice enough to have certificates for the entire team. I will give them to the team in the locker room. Great job, fellas. Okay, before we end this segment for the football team, I just would like to... One name mentioned was Coach Porter and Coach Bernhardt for really stressing the academic piece for us and helping the kids, you know, guide them in the classroom and keep their grades where they need to be. As you can see, we've had great improvement. I think Mr. Robbins told me we had 89 of 90 players academically eligible, so I like... That's great news. Thank you so much for your help. Also, to the community, I know we've had a lot of ups and downs. I like to win just as much as anybody, and we've had some tough losses early on, but we've rebuilt this program together, all of us. It's not a one-person job. It's all of us sticking together, having each other's back, and when the chips are down, that's when we need you the most, because it's part of sports. You're not always gonna, you know, win with the score, but we're winning in the classroom, in the community, and words can't explain, like I said, how proud I am of these fine young men and my staff. We're gonna continue to get better. You know, I read off a lot of names tonight, all those teams that we've been lucky enough to beat. There's one name I forgot, and I'm hoping to come here next year and tell you our point differential for that as well. We're laser locked for St. Augustine Prep. I don't care if they recruit. I don't care what they do. I don't care that they're an All-Star team. We're gonna beat 'em with Violin kids. We're not ducking anyone. That's not the way we are. We finished seventh in South Jersey. We were finished fifth as far as the public schools go, and we finished 10th in the state of New Jersey in Group 5, all those North Jersey powerhouses. So things are getting better. We're gonna continue to strive for greatness, and we want to bring that state championship home to Violin, a 12-0 season, so we're gonna do that for you, for the community and for us, okay? Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Coach.
To all of the athletes that were recognized tonight and the coaches, we just want to congratulate you all and thank you for being a part of the Violin Public Schools. You make us very proud, and we hope you will stay here and keep up the good work. Thank you all so much. And now we have a special treat for everyone, considering it's holiday time, and I would like to call forward Mrs. Kim Kell from Duran School, and she has the choir who is going to sing a few songs for us tonight. Mrs. Kell, do you... I don't know if you need that microphone that's over here. Do you need that microphone? Thank you to all of our parents who took the time to bring your children out tonight and add a special touch to this meeting. Thank you. We appreciate it.
It doesn't work. Thank you for having us. We are missing some of our people here. Do you feel any brush?
Ms. Kel, we have certificates for the students, so if you want to go to the podium and help Mr. Jennings and Ms. Cottisbody as they call each child up.
While we take a picture, though, could, Mr. Greco, I saw him here somewhere, could you come and get in the picture with your students, please?
Say the name and give the certs out.
You want me to pronounce them? Okay, I'll try my best. Ms. Kel, you need to get in the picture, then you can read the name. Okay.
Let me get my board members in there.
Brian Becker. Luis Ramirez. She's not here. Jay Dean Ruiz. Julia Hendershot. Rasan Jeffrey. Alexa LeCart. She's not here. Naeja Ramos. Cecile Seymour. Tenasia Clark, she's not here. Oh, she is here. Who's Tenasia Clark? Alexa Figueroa. Ivan Perez. Caitlin Carpenter. Tazir Lickney. Samaya Lee. I'm so sorry. Woodleyz Villafein. Grace Valdez. Elena LaRocque. Gianna Tobolski. Kaylee Wright. Jayla Weaver. Tiara Hills. Leilani Delgado. Thank you so much for having us today. Beautiful job. Thank you all very much for coming and making our board meeting extra special.
Thank you. If anybody plans on, if anybody would like to leave before we continue the meeting, now would be the time. Happy holidays. Congratulations.
Thank you, thanks.
Don't forget the trophy.
Merry Christmas.
That's right. Two hands on that thing.
Fun game.
Darn right. Four-seven.
No, that's what I said, I said, oh my God, you never get happy.
Tell me after.
I guess it took you literally a long laugh, Joe. I think Joe's still over here.
All righty, at this time, do I have a motion for the approval of minutes for the month of November?
So moved.
Second.
We also have two meetings with the asterisk in it for October and November.
We're gonna do them separate?
Okay, do I, I had a motion, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes, and abstaince in November twenty-eighth.
Mr. Sobrana?
Yes.
Mr. Duwini?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes for the date October twelfth, two thousand sixteen, and November sixteenth, two thousand sixteen?
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Haley.
I'm only going to call the non-conflicted members.
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley? Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Duwini?
Motion carries.
Motion carries, sorry.
Do we have a report by our board solicitor this evening?
None.
That'll close you out for the year. Come on now, it'll jinx us. That's it. All right, Dr. Crucio, motion and resolutions, please.
Do you want?
I'm sorry, recommendations.
No, I mean, any public comment?
Oh, do we have any public comment on agenda items this evening?
That wasn't an agenda item, okay.
Seeing none, Dr. Crucio, recommendations, please.
Okay, I would like to recommend approval of one-point-one-A through one-point-one-D, and I would like to note that Mr., Dr. Rossi handed out an extra sheet with two things that have been added to that personnel agenda.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Haley.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana?
Yes.
Mr. Duwini?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend the approval of two-point-one through two-point-eight.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Haley.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana?
Yes.
Mr. Duwini?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend the approval of three-point-one.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana?
Yes.
Mr. Duwini?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend the approval of four-point-one through four-point-twenty.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Haley, I just need a, just a, just an update clarification on four-point-one-three, please.
Since the last board meeting, we, this is about the preschool and the equip budget, and also the five-year plan. Since the last meeting, we had some conversations with the state just to get some clarification on classrooms that we needed to cut, and they informed us that provider and industry classrooms that are fully enrolled should not be cut, and as we know, that the budget is based on full enrollment. So what we decided to do is, we're going to cut the six classrooms, well, since Almond Road is not full, and we have four empty classrooms there, we're cutting those four plus the other two, because we need to cut a total of six. So six classrooms are being cut from Almond Road and given back to the providers that we had mentioned last week. And then, in addition to that, we're cutting four more classrooms from there and giving, restoring provider classrooms that were cut last year. So that leaves us with four classrooms that we will house in existing elementary schools here. The state had said, after reviewing our enrollment, they pointed out that the industry classrooms are more significantly under-enrolled, particularly Almond Road Preschool, and that the provider classrooms are closer to full enrollment. The cut in classrooms should be made to the Almond Road Preschool. But as I said, if we cut six and we were down to eight there, that does not justify renting that building, so that's why we're giving more away. So basically, we're giving away, or not giving away, we're filling ten classrooms elsewhere, cutting them from us, and dispersing the four within the district.
Okay.
Okay? And all, oh, by the way, all of the providers were notified, this was on Friday, we had a conference call with the state, then we called the providers, we reached two of them and emailed the rest to inform them that they would not be getting cut.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? I just want to have one quick comment. This was a little bit stressful last week, because it was just the rules were changing on the fly, and many, many staff members in district as well as private providers were burning the midnight oil to find out what the best thing to do was here, and once the state gets involved, they pretty much drive the bus, so we pretty much have our decision made. But I do thank everyone for putting the extra hours and time in with this, and this, this is not a reflection of anyone in district that was not doing the job properly or anything like that, it's just strictly lack of enrollment, and with consolidating, like we plan on doing, the hope would be that, once again, our in-districts preschool has a waiting list, which would call, that's a great problem to have, so we would look for the additional classrooms. So, I know Ms. Monteleone's in the house this evening, and I know that your passion is filling the buildings and putting the best product out there, so continue to do what you're doing and let your staff know that we, as a board, are behind them one-hundred percent, and like every storm, we will weather this one and live to fight another day. So, thank you.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Yes, after January one, of course, administration will have to have a discussion with the board regarding notification to the state.
Correct.
Regarding the school itself.
Correct, so that will be...
That's a discussion for after the first of the year.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you for that, Mr. DeSanto. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. English?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify that, I just want to thank the state for clarifying that information for us, number one, and number two, for making the decision for the board.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Rios.
Could I just add one thing about another topic on here?
Absolutely.
Okay. On item number four-point-nine, there are stale data checks that we're voiding. There's one check for eighty dollars to Jim Maines, it's check number two-six-six-nine-eight-three. That will come off of the list, because we're doing a replacement check to them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings, for reaching out to them.
Okay. All right, do we have any other question or comments before roll call? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana?
Yes.
Mr. Duwini?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion for the approval of bills for the month of October, two thousand sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Haley.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrana?
Yes.
Mr. Duwini?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
There is one emergent item, I would like to recommend the approval of a resolution for withdrawal of funds from the maintenance reserve account and appropriate into the required maintenance account for use on required maintenance activities for a school facility as reported in the comprehensive maintenance plan pursuant to NJAC six-A colon twenty-six-A dash four. as reported in the comprehensive maintenance plan pursuant to NJAC six A colon twenty-six A dash four.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments on that? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Ms. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. D'Winnie?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
At this time, it's the opportunity for the public to address the board. Please limit your comments to five minutes.
We do have a yellow sheet from Celeste Olivoe.
Okay.
I'm Celeste Olivoe, I'm the Student Government Association, uh, thank you, uh, recording secretary for Violin High School. We're trying to get the, um, this building, the north building, named after Dennis Tanner. Uh, in nineteen seventy-nine, he was the vice principal of the school, and he went as a chaperone for a field trip over to Puerto Rico with a number of students, and one of them was drowning, and he gave his life to save his. So, our goal was to name this building after Dennis Tanner.
Um, I just wanted to add that many people want to say that it should be just a pool or like a gym or something, but he gave the ultimate sacrifice to save one of our students, and that is what everybody looked for in an administrator. So I believe he should be given the biggest honor and name after another school. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Yeah, sorry about that. Like, to be honest, I didn't learn about Dennis Tanner until a few months ago. And once I learned about him, the sacrifice he did for this school, how like, how well-liked he was by the students in this school, I think he is the definition of what we'd call a hero, a role model. And I think it's important that students of this generation and generations coming along to learn about this person, hopefully strive to be someone like that.
Just, um, just for you students, um, usually we do not exchange in dialogue. It's, it's a chance for the public to address the board. But I just want to let you know that it's admirable that you come up here and speak about the history of this man. This is a subject that, um, has been, um, addressed through, um, the Historical Committee at VHS, and, um, there's actually a letter that is in place, um, that, uh, I guess the, the new board will be addressing, um, in upcoming months concerning this. Uh, we, we have a policy in place, um, and it's, it's been pretty much, uh, Mr. DeSanto, correct me if I'm wrong, we've worked this out, um, to the T, and, um, this will be something that, I believe, um, will be getting addressed sometime in the year two thousand seventeen. But I do thank each one of you for taking the time to educate yourself on this man who definitely was a hero. And, um, we'd look, talk about angels, the man's definitely an angel looking down on us today, and I'm sure tearing his eye, seeing you guys coming to the podium. Thank you.
Let me add to that, Scott. Uh, this, this woman sitting right here for the Daily Journal, you can give her a lot of credit. She ran a story about Dennis Tanner and brought the spotlight back on the focus of what kind of man he was. And, um, this has been brought up in the past. People ask me, "What am I going to do next?" I can tell you, once I'm off this board, I'm going to get on your side. We're going to lead the charge to seek this school to be named the Dennis Tanner Building, or whatever you, whatever the board agrees to call it. The board has the vote on it, and there's going to be other names thrown out there. But I am going to come, we have a letter here, it's been talked about, there's been talked about maybe possible conflicts I may have. I have no conflicts, but I'm telling you, I will be glad to help you and be a voice, because I would, Scott and I and Ms. Quinn, we were freshmen in this building. He died, I think, in eight, nineteen eighty, correct? Spring of eighty? And, uh, and I was very close with the principal at the time, he was still alive, Dr. Horton, and it just, it comes back like that. And the goal was to not only bring the scholarship back, but to tell Violin, the Violin students when they hit high school, "How do you define a hero?" This man made two choices, and rumor has it he couldn't swim, but he made a choice to go in and save that young man. And then, as he held this young man up, he had a choice to either save himself and go in, or hold the boy up. And he chose to hold that boy up. So in my opinion, he is a hero, and I'll be happy to hopefully lead the way to, for the board to make a informed vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, students. Do we have anyone else this evening?
Good evening, my name is Vicki Miller, Violin, New Jersey. I'm going to talk from this phone, so it's going to be close. Good evening, Dr. Gruccio, school board, and the members of the audience. My name is Vicki Miller, and I live in Violin. This is going to be a very emotional, to me. I would sincerely like to thank the board, under the direction of President English and Vice President Brian D'Winnie, for everything they have done. This, wait. This year, done this year, we are losing two huge assets to this board. Scott is always there to talk to and to listen to with our concerns. He has a prac, he has practiced nothing but transparency and collaboration during his term on the board. He is a great leader and an act that's going to be hard to follow. Scott is, Scott has certainly led some, wait. Yeah.
That was alert.
Now I can see. Scott is always there to talk and listen to our concerns. He has practiced nothing but transparency and collaboration during the time on the board. He is a great leader and an act that's going to be hard to follow. A plumber by trade, Scott has certainly had some leaks to patch up on this board. On the school district, sorry. I could have been on the board, too.
Where'd they get that bill?
Could have been on the board, too. He has done an excellent job. Brian's financial background and ability to break the budget down to layman's terms has been very helpful as a citizen, a citizen trying to explain how the budget is spent every year. I hope that after leaving the board, you do not leave, not give up your passion for the, uh, school and children. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, Ms. Miller.
No, no, thank you, I'm good. Good eve, uh, good evening, members of the board, public, staff members. Um, I'm actually, uh, my name's Frank DiGiorgio, I'm a resident of Violin, former school board member, and, um, I'm here to try to get Mr. English to answer my phone call, I have a plumbing issue. So I figured I'd come here and get you personally.
You got it.
Kidding aside, Scott, uh, Scott English and Brian D'Winnie deserve our community's gratitude for their service to the Violin Public School District. You have dedicated precious time away from your family and spent it here, serving the public. And you all did it for the right reasons, if I may add that as well. When I first got elected and was entrusted by the community to be a member of this board, one person, Scott, uh, Brian D'Winnie, was on that board ahead of me, that I knew on the board. I didn't really know too many other board members. And Brian was, um, I guess, nice enough to extend that helping hand, uh, and it was greatly appreciated, if I may add, as well. Scott, what can I say, uh, we've known each other for a while as well. You've taken care of most of my plumbing issues, and, and you've also been great to work with on the board when I had my tenure on there as well. Uh, in closing, a brief, and I want to be brief, your guidance and experience will be missed. I want to thank you personally for serving our community and dedicating your time away from family. I wish you and your families all the best, and happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. DiGiorgio.
Thank you, Frank.
Do we have anyone else that would like to approach the podium this evening? Okay, seeing none, it is time for our board member remarks. Historically, I start with the right, but I'm going to start with the left this evening. Might as well switch it up for the last one. Ms. Acosta?
Well, I would just first and foremost like to wish all of our Violin Public School District parents, students, uh, friends, teachers, administration, and so on and so forth, a very safe, happy, and wonderful Christmas holiday season. I really would like to take this opportunity just to acknowledge the contribution that all of our, uh, staff members, um, coaches. It was very heartwarming to hear, um, the student athletes, uh, really supporting and, um, appreciating their coaches, and the coaches acknowledging all the wonderful athletes that we have. This is a really wonderful school district, and I am very grateful that my children are a part of it. As far as my colleagues, my fellow colleagues, I just would like to wish all of you a very happy, uh, New Year and a very Merry Christmas, and tell you all that I'm very proud to be serving with all of you, because I know that all of you have only the best intentions and have the greatest hearts and are very dedicated to the children of our community. To Scott and Brian, um, I just want to say, um, I, you know, this is, this is difficult, because, uh, besides being great friends, and wonderful colleagues, I can't express to you how much I appreciate the dedication, the commitment, and the passion that the two of you have shown for our children in this community. It means so much to me, it truly does. Um, you know, there have been times in the past, uh, you know, couple of years where we haven't exactly seen eye to eye, but for the most part, um, I can only say that I have nothing but respect for the wonderful service and commitment that you have shown. And I hope, um, you know, I hope that this is only the beginning of a wonderful and continued, um, relationship, and I hope to hear you guys, you know, giving us suggestions, um, at the podium, and certainly not forgetting, um, you know, that we still need our community and, and we need you. So thank you so much for your service, I can't say anything else, but, um, you know, my heart really goes out to the both of you for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. Mr. Sabrana?
I want to echo Ms. Acosta's comments in regard to the holidays for our students, our staff, our families, and everyone associated with the district. I hope you have a very safe and, and happy holiday season and a great New Year. Mr. English, I remember standing in the driveway of your house in two thousand and ten when you asked me to come over and bring you a DVD of a board meeting because you wanted to see how that went and, and, uh, what it was going to be like serving. And when I drove away that, that day, uh, the first thought I had was a word that Ms. Acosta just used, it was passion. That you seemed to have a passion for this. And over the years, I've, I've come to learn that you have a passion for a lot of things. And, and your dedication and your commitment to doing the best you could for the students and the staff and the parents of this district was always very, very clear and apparent to me. And of course, there were times I, I didn't agree with you a hundred percent, but, you know, when can, when can that ever happen? But I never doubted that you were, that your heart was in the right place and that you were trying to do the best you could under the circumstances. I've come to appreciate that even more this year, uh, making the transition from being an employee to a, to a board member. Um, and I've learned a great deal in the last year, and I, I sort of wish you were going to be around a little longer so we could, that, that relationship could develop and deepen even further. But I understand there's a time to, to move on, and, and there certainly is it. Uh, Mr. D'Winnie, uh, the same for you. Steady hand at the tiller, uh, your financial expertise, very, very much needed and will be very missed. But I wish you both the best. And I just wish that Mr. English would have, at least once, observed some of my hand signals from the back of the room, which would indicate, uh, like, one minute left, a half a minute, and wrap it up. But he, he never did, so, other than that, I wish you well, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. You might be giving me that signal tonight. Uh, Ms. Rios?
I would like to congratulate the Violin High School athletes and the coaches for such a wonderful job, the Duran Elementary School choir for a wonderful performance. I would like to thank all of the honorees and congratulate all of the honorees of all year and the flag saluters for such a wonderful job, month after month, since the beginning of the year to the end of the year, for all they do. Uh, the administrators, educators, staff, students, parents, community members, thank you so much for making the district better and making our community better. As far as Brian goes, I kind of already gave him a speech, but, um, but when I met Brian, I really couldn't figure him out. He was very serious and, um, very short with his words, which I liked. And, um, I said, "I really don't know if, if, you know, if he gets along with me or not," because, like, he has the same facial expression for everything. But throughout the years, I feel like we built a relationship. We got to get to know each other better, we got to respect each other. I believe he's honest and transparent, and he has never failed on any of the district's financial predictions. Although not always followed, but he's never failed the predictions. He was always right on everything that he said. But, um, I want to publicly say that that's the same characteristics that my older brother has. And so, as I was getting to know Brian, I said to myself, "He's just like Alex." So I just have to accept him and learn how he is. And, um, and throughout that process, I figured, they're the same. You know, they're good people, they're good men, they're good leaders, good spouses, good fathers, um, good friends, hardworking people. And it is a blessing to have a friendship like that, especially as a woman, having a male figure like this person next to you. It really says a lot and demonstrates a lot, and, um, the wife should be very proud. And we thank her for sacrificing her husband to the board and to the community, because he has always been very active, uh, not only in the board, but throughout the community. And as far as Scott goes, um, Scott was always very active and very visible throughout the district. He also helps out in the community as well. We have, um, gotten along right from the very beginning. We have the same philosophies, uh, we think alike, we, we care about the students, we care about the district, we care about making decisions that are effective, that are best for our district. And he's also a Virgo, and I'm a Taurus, so that makes it work. So we've gotten along well. And, um, and I thank you, Scott, also for your ongoing support, um, not only on the board, but in my other aspects of either my family life or my political life. And I thank your wife as well for sacrificing the time to allow you, you know, to be part of something big like the board and maybe, um, and the community. So I do really appreciate both of you. You are good gentlemen, and, um, it's a pleasure having both of you as friends. And I hope the friendship continues, even though you're not on the board, and I hope the communication continues. I wish you the best of luck, and you will be missed on this board.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rios.
And Merry Christmas to all, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings?
My turn. Um, Scott, you and I finished just as we started. We're the same, nothing between us, nothing over our heads. Brian, same way. We, we started, finished the same exact way. And, uh, you guys...
And you guys are probably the hardest working board members I have seen, that includes myself, to strive to be as active as you guys are, I mean, that's what I'm gonna do my next two years. And it's gonna be tough, it's gonna be tough. And I'd like to talk about Coach Russo for a minute. When we hired Coach Russo, I really didn't know what to expect, but Eugene was very adamant about, he said, "This is the guy that we need," so we went for it, I held my breath, but Coach Russo doesn't know that. There's times when I saw him coaching when he wasn't on the field, and he didn't know I was watching him, and I seen some of the things he was doing, and there's a quote that says, "Quality is doing it when no one else is watching," and that's what Coach did. So, I want to miss you guys, and go Violin, rise as one.
Thank you, KOB. Mr. Boardley.
Mr. English, Mr. Dewine, you've got big shoes to fill, and it's gonna take all of us to do that. So, we appreciate your service to this board, and thank you for guiding me along my first year here. You guys have been extremely helpful to me, so I'll keep that short and sweet. For Coach Russo, I've had the pleasure of knowing his family for many years, his mom was a teacher of mine, so I know the qualities that he has. What a lot of people don't see is what he offers his community. He's extremely active with our youth sports below the high school level, and that's gonna pay dividends not only for the school district, but for our city in general. So, there's not enough praise to go around for what Coach Russo does, nor do I think he wants it, but it needs to be said for the type of man that he is. So, I'm appreciative to Coach Russo and to all of our student athletes, they've brought our community back together. A lot of times, Violin, the Violin pride is carried by our football team, and this year they've really instilled some Violin pride back in our community, and greatly appreciated for that. Merry Christmas to everybody, and congratulations to our academic team as well for a very tight victory, but a victory nonetheless, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boardley. Mr. Pagano.
Well, I just want to say thanks to Scott and Brian for the time and commitment they have put in over the years for the betterment of our district, community, and our children. As board members, you work hard for countless hours a month, show up to meetings, school functions, and many other events, all in addition to many other life responsibilities, such as your career, your family, other commitments, and trying to have a social life. As board members, Scott and Brian would challenge our thinking and at times always striving for the best possible outcome, trying to set high standards of operations for this board, and I believe the board as well as the district is in a better place for it. As for Scott, I had heard someone say once that a speech should be like a woman's skirt, long enough to cover the subject, but short enough to create interest. Again, thank you both for being, for bringing passion, intellect, insight, and experience as well as all your hard work to the board. It was a pleasure working with you and an honor to call you both friends. You will be greatly missed. Best wishes to both of you for all your future endeavors. I would also like to take the time to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year's. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pagano. Ms. Cottas Patti.
First off, I'd like to thank all of our class presidents for coming up and doing a great job with the flag salute this evening. To all of our student athletes that were honored tonight, Tess, Amanda, and our Violin High School football team, coach, congratulations to Coach Russo for being Coach of the Year. It takes a great coach, like he said, but it also takes great students to do that, and a good coaching staff also. I'd like to thank those students that did come up to the mic tonight to speak. It does take a little bit of guts to do that, and I commend them for that. It takes a lot of guts to sit up here too, so I commend them for doing that. Brian, I have to agree with Ms. Rios, with not knowing how to take you, my first year, you scared the crap out of me. I didn't even, I couldn't even look at you, I listened though, everything that you said, everything, you were, you're so knowledgeable about finance that it just, it amazed me. This year, I got to know you a whole lot better, and I really, really listened, and sometimes when I thought I might have made up my mind, I listened hard, you might have come out with something else, whether I agreed or not, I listened, and you always had a good explanation for everything that you said. Scott, you have been a good, a great mentor, you've been there for all of us when we needed, when we needed it, your phone has been 24/7, I apologize for that. Mrs. English, you make yourself available for, you have made yourself available for everything. To Mrs. English and Mrs. Dewine, thank you, as Ms. Rios said, for sacrificing your husbands for us, because they were, they're very knowledgeable, they've helped us, and without them, I don't think we could have been the board that we are. We have a great board this year, and these two are truly gonna be missed. I respect both of you tremendously, your knowledge is a wealth, and you're gonna be missed, but I have a, I have a really hard time grasping the fact that one of you is not gonna be out there at one of our budget meetings or talking about, you know, the naming of a school. You're still gonna be involved, so we're gonna welcome that. To everyone else out there, I'd like to wish you all a very merry and blessed Christmas and a very happy, healthy, and safe 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Cottas Patti. Mr. DeSanto had asked to speak this evening, so with all.
Thank you, I know it's irregular, but over the years that I've had the privilege of serving as solicitor, I've seen board members who are friends serve on the board, but I don't think I've ever seen two friends as different as the two of you. Brian is analytical and deliberative, Scott is visceral and passionate, Brian goes by the book, Scott throws the book away. But I think Frank DiGiorgio said it best when he said, "The two of you are here for the right reason," and I just wanted to thank you, it was a privilege working with you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. Dr. Grecio.
Okay, first of all, we have another donation.
Yay.
So, Max Laiter School has started what they call their Giving Trees, and they are hanging scarves and hats and gloves on trees throughout the neighborhood for those in need, so that they can take them at any time, and we had Jane Shepherd from Crafters for Christ donate 60 hats that were hand crocheted, and she gave them to Max Laiter School for their project. So, we want to thank her and wish Max Laiter School well with the project that they started. Secondly, I always say this, but tonight was just another prime example of why I am so proud to be part of the Violin Public Schools. You know, oftentimes you hear the negatives or the perceptions that kind of bring us down, people who don't want to send their children here, people who believe things that they hear and don't really know what's happening within our buildings. And tonight was just one small example of the wonderful students we have within our district, the wonderful coaches and teachers and people who give so much of their time and provide a really great education for all of our students. And any student that attends Violin Public Schools and wants to leave with a good education, the opportunity is here for them to do that. And so, once again, I am very proud to be a part of the school district, and I thank all of our students and our staff, and I'm very proud that they're here in Violin. I'd also like to take this opportunity to wish all of our families and staff and all of those in our community a very happy and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and I wish all of you a very blessed, healthy, and Happy New Year. As far as Scott and Brian, it has truly been my pleasure to work with both of you. I have been here a long time, I've worked with many board members, I've worked with many superintendents, and I think over the past few years, we've had a board where we've really been able to be honest and open with one another and really be who we believe, you know, what we believe in and say what we believe in, and we may not always have agreed, but I think we've always been able to be upfront. And I thank you for, both of you, for your compassion for students, for the time you've given and sacrificed from your families to be here for our students and our district. As two of you have now said, you definitely are different. Brian is a man of very few words, Scott is a man of...
Too many.
He always says, "I'm not supposed to respond, but..." Just gonna say a couple words, right, Pop? But they're both here because they care, and that's the most important thing. I've been through lots of boards, we don't always agree on a lot of things, but being able to just be yourself and talk things out is important, and I think the last few years, we've had a board that's been able to do that. So, it has truly been my pleasure to work with both of you, I wish you both nothing but the best. I know you will be around, and if I can ever be of any help in any way, I hope you will remember to pick up the phone and call.
Thank you, Dr. Grecio.
And now, if I could take just a moment before you and Brian speak, on behalf of all of us, Kim and I have a little something that we want to give you. First of all, here's your name plate. My husband's name plate is still on his desk in my house, so I'm sure you're proud of what you've done, and that's for you. And then, we have a plaque here for both of you, this is Mr. English's, and Mr. Dewine, excuse me for reaching over you, and Kim has your board picture.
I'm also handsome, or... What do you think?
Can we get a vote?
And modest.
Well, on behalf of all of us, thank you again. We wish you nothing but the very best. God bless you both.
Thank you. That's your first time ever. Hey. Sit down, guys. Well, Mr. Dewine, go for it.
Well, thank you for all the nice things, and it's the first time my son ever gave me a standing ovation, so thank you for leading that. Merry Christmas, everybody, for at least now we're done. It's rare that a, not in my time that I know, a board, school board president and vice president both step down at the same time. So, I think that goes a little bit of showing, it's not about us, it's not about any power trip. For me, it's time to move on. I didn't come with any speech, but as Scott knows, 'cause he sees me, I write down some comments here, so I'm gonna share some comments. Community service, it should be about giving selflessly, and when you're in a spot to govern, you should govern fairly without any personal prejudices. I came on this board in 2008 with Damaris Rios. I left, I did not seek reelection in 2011, because I wanted to do what my father did, and that's coach a Little League team, and I did. And then, I think a couple days before the application was due in 2013, Frank DiGiorgio and Scott English show up and say, "Come on, you gotta do it, you gotta do it." I went to my wife, she said, "No." I said, "Okay, you really want to do it? You do what you want." Okay, that's all she had to give me, that rope, because there were some things that I thought I could help with. As far as Damaris goes and about being on the board, there's a lot of personal sacrifices that we have here. I sat through two no-hitters at a board meeting. One was Roy Halliday and the Phillies, and that was upsetting, but it was a board meeting, you take responsibility, and the Phillies don't show up in a playoff so too often. The other was my son pitched one in a fall ball game, and I had a line of teachers telling me I needed to raise taxes during that meeting, so I wasn't too happy. But I also missed a number of plays, events, et cetera. My daughter Morgan was in fifth grade, I think in eighth, and my son Jared was in second grade, so do my wife Dawn, my daughter Morgan, and my son Jared, thank you for sharing. And for Ms. Rios, who has a young son, you know, my, it has to be even so much tougher to give that time, and I really admire you. We both came on together, I can say this, 'cause I'm your big brother, older brother, I should say. You came and you've grown tremendously, and I think you're an excellent governor, independent voice for the people, and I'm glad that you thought of me as your brother, because I didn't want to get in front of you when you wanted to say something, and you weren't too happy, so, thank you. I did my best to try and hold down real estate taxes for the residents of Violin. I know it's hard to do when you have rising costs, but I guess if anything, on the budget side, I tried to show what we could do different than just raising taxes. I thanked the past administrators, business administrators that work with, Ms. Haley is a jewel here, and a true professional, and her team, and I wish her well with who knows what's gonna happen. But what do you judge yourself by when you're on the school board? You know, what can you say, that this class had a higher GPA, that this choir won this? It's really hard to judge, and staying out of day-to-day topics, you can't really take credit. I'm hopeful that some of these kids that we went to school, we were on board, become extremely successful, and we could say, "Hey, yeah, we served as a board member when that student was in the school." Hopefully, that student who has that success comes back and is generous to Violin. But I am happy to say that as a board member, I did help lead the charge for the memorial school auditorium, which was in dire need of repairs, the new tennis courts with lights and lights on the baseball field. I wasn't part of the decision to build a weight room, although I wanted to, we didn't have the support, but I very much support it, and look what's happening with our student athletes now that have a weight training facility that's on par with some colleges. We're getting scholarship offers and scholarship awards that are worth in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I wasn't here when Coach Russo was chosen, but he's been a great choice, he's always been calm, always, he has a comment, "We'll be okay." He changed the logo for Violin High. If you remember, when we backed the school, it was a puffy old rooster, which everybody who you played against called it a chicken. So, imagine that, you line up against somebody, and people calling you chicken and other choice words, so made it a little tough, but he also created a little saying that when he finished any statement he made, he'd say, "Go Violin, rise as one." So, I commend him, and it's great to see the football team, which is really the biggest sport as far as number of athletes and coaches that we have here, to be back on top. I'm gonna give you a little history lesson with my good friend Scott here. It's good to see the Marie Duran School Choir here, Ms. Kel was a classmate of ours and Ms. Quinn's, but Scott and I met each other at the Marie Duran School, we've been great friends ever since. But when we got married, and I happened to move in right next door to him, it was in the mid-'90s, and I saw Scott had a long honey-do list all the time, he was always doing things for his honey. So, back in '97, '98, I said, "I'm gonna start a organization, Scott, and you're gonna be my vice president." And we started the Red and Gray Gridiron Club, and then Scott learned a little bit about governing and nonprofits, et cetera. He went on through the Little League era, and that, he was bit by a bug to give back, and I think I had some convincing of him coming on the school board, and I gave him the same probably five-minute speech that I gave Mr. DiGiorgio, you know, just vote your mind, don't be persuaded by anybody, do your work, be informed, and make an educated vote, and you have nothing to worry about. So, but with the Red and Gray, Scott and myself and a couple other parents led the charge to do some things that hadn't been done in Violin, and that's, you know, we led the charge for lights, which Mayor Varsi picked up, we led the charge for renovations, which we did some big renovations there under the direction of Wayne Weaver, and I wanted to put a turf field there, which hopefully one day the future boards will do, because looking at the field at Millville game, you're gonna have some injuries, folks, so hopefully we can get that done. But make a difference, people, in your lives, students if they're listening to this, you can make a difference. You don't have to be elected, you don't, you just have to be involved. I see some young folks here that are always given and are involved, and I think that's great. You know, as parents, there's PTOs, there's PTSOs, we had that short one, I see Ms. Tish was here, we started the X Factor that Craig Parrish, myself, and other parents started, and I heard Ms. Calon say that's still going on, that's great, it gives the students the opportunity to perform. It gives the students the opportunity to perform, who may not be able to participate in plays or choirs. But I think that Scott, and the lesson that I've seen, and what he's done as far as a leader in this community, he's probably, he's the best president I served under, and that's not enough on anybody. He's the hardest worker, by far. If you drive by Scott, alls you see is this all the time, his left ear, he's always on the phone. I hope the policemen aren't driving behind him, but the guy spends, I see him on his back deck talking school board business. And I'm the total opposite, I'm a man of few words, and I don't wanna have those conversations. So he fills me in, he's been a great leader, and hopefully, the future boards here, which has everybody here, and Mr. Medio, who I served with, and Mr. Sabrina, who I served with, and Mr. Fiocchi, who I don't know, but I do know your father, I admire him and respect him a lot, and if you're anything like him, I think the board's in good hands, and I wish you well. But do your best to keep the programs that we're recognizing, and the music programs. We've got a great band and choir. When it comes down to cuts, it's gonna be an easy choice to someone to say, or easy statement, cut sports, cut music. This is what these kids need, this is what the carrot is for these kids. Do your best to keep them in place, and look elsewhere. And for me, my colleagues here can tell you, I'm fair, I'm calm, and I doubt any of them heard me say a curse word, which happens a lot in the back room, but that's just making informed decisions. And I wish everybody the best. I thank the administrations that tolerated me, because I always used to ask a million questions. Ask Mr. Franchetta and Ms. Haley, that poor guy, I would send him 40 questions, but that gave me the education that you need as you move forward. But I congratulate my good friend here, Scott, for being an excellent leader. I thank everybody for the kind words, and that's all I have to say. Farewell.
Thank you, Mr. Dewiney.
Who got in on the over-under for my final? All right. How come I didn't get a shot of getting in? I probably couldn't even win that, because you know how I fly off the handle here. Before I address my fellow colleagues and everything, I'm gonna start where my heart is, and that's with the students. This evening was probably the best way to go out. Brian and I are avid athletic lovers, and we fight for our student athletes as well, student athletes and our regular educational students as well, our special needs. We fight for all students, there's no barrier or anything like that. Tonight, we had Duran School, like Brian said, they got to sing, and it's really fitting because that's where it all began. We have a little triangle here, we always call it the triangle. We have Debbie, we have Brian, we have myself. The Class of '83 is a unique class, still, I think we're one of the few classes that still give a scholarship to a graduating senior. It really comes, we come from good stock, we come from good teachers, we come from good families. You know, it's unique, the way Vineland was back then. And then, we see Coach Russo come tonight. His goal was, he wanted to change the culture in Vineland. And that's a tough thing to do, because a lot of people are content with the way things are. What that man has done in four years, it's kinda crazy, because a lot of people, when he first got hired, I got the heat, because they said, "What do you have against him?" It was really simple with me. The man had an established job, he had a family, he's gotta put food on his table. We weren't hiring a football coach, we were hiring a PE teacher. The PE teacher is part of that thorough, efficient education piece that the county pounds in our heads. And his stipend is being a football coach, the extracurricular piece. To see that man today speak, and to see what the program has done, speaks leaps of the vision of this man I call 24/7. He believed in starting a solid foundation and changing the culture. In conjunction with, we have a superintendent who, for the first time, comes up with a strategic plan. Strategic plan, foundation, blueprint, the same type, different words, but the same result. You have to start somewhere. Visions. In four years, we see what Coach Russo has built. Dr. Gruccio with the strategic plan, many people were skeptical about it, but the results are showing, and it's a vision. And it's people like that that, you know, we hear the negatives, but that's the positive pieces that continue to grow in education, that's trying to change the culture, or get it back where it used to be. It was great to see Ms. Kell as well tonight, because again, Class of '83, it's just a certain breed of student from that time, and I mean, I couldn't be happier to be a part of that class. I, I'm pretty methodical, so I like to write down things so I don't miss anything. So I just wanna take a little bit of your time. A little bit, or a lot? I wanna tell everyone, it's really been a fast six years and nine months, and we've been through many peaks and valleys. I would truly miss it. All the work sessions, the regular meetings, committee meetings, executive session discussions, union negotiations, budget time, all the student events, the emails, the phone calls. Man, that list goes on for miles. What am I gonna do with an extra 20 to 30 hours a week? I'm sure my wife, who's out there tonight, can answer that in about 20 or 30 seconds. It's definitely not the easiest of jobs, being a Vineland Board of Education member. Very seldom do you hear the words "great job," versus always hearing "what you should have done," or "why are you doing it that way?" By filling out the petition and putting our names on the ballot, we put ourselves out there for the scrutiny of others. So it's kinda self-inflicted. But until you actually sit up here and are part of the inner workings of the Vineland Public School District, it's so unfair, the way we are judged, from time to time. As I like to say, it is what it is. I wanna take a moment to thank some people. So let's get started at the very beginning. With what fueled my passion for being the best Vineland Board of Education member I could be, I'm gonna tap on Ms. Marco and her knowledge. Back in the day, they used to have these editorials, and fictitious names would be able to sign in and leave something. And I'm not sure if I could say this, because it sounds weird, but this was the fictitious name that was out there. It was known as Nuckin' Futs. That was a name. And as I'm campaigning, and I was pretty simple, I didn't really believe that you needed signs or anything like that. If people really know who you are, and they know what you're all about, you're gonna get in here. Well, this character, and again, fictitious name, I would love to buy him coffee someday, or her coffee someday, and find out who you are. They put out there publicly that possibly I should stick to plumbing, because I'm in way over my head. The rest is really history, because I love a challenge. So to that fictitious name, if you're out there, anytime, 9 o'clock, Bagel University, I'll buy the coffee, I'd like to meet you face-to-face. I have six years and nine months of experience of not knowing what the hell I'm doing. To the taxpayers, I thank you for having the faith in me to put me in this Vineland Board of Education seat for two terms. I hope I didn't let you down, I always try to be fair. To our VBO meeting regulars, Ms. Miller, Mr. Burke, the norties who are retired, so we haven't seen them, but they're always here faithfully, and to the three amigos, Cedric, Anthony, we haven't seen Xavier too much, but when I see the three young guys like you out there, that shows me, and it shows us board members, that we are fighting for the right things. You are a product of what is so good about the Vineland Public School District. And I thank you guys, and I thank the regulars that come out here, meeting after meeting, to listen, to express your thoughts, to have the courage to get to the podium, and just keep it real. If anybody went with the under, you lost your money. All of our district employees from A to Z, for following, for allowing me into your buildings and departments over the years, which helped me better understand the daily operations of the Vineland Public School District. I so appreciate the employees who stepped out of their comfort zone and opened my eyes up to the realities of our school district. I never gave up my sources from within, and I thank you all for educating me from day one until the present. I've been blessed over the years to have been educated by some of the best teachers, teachers like Ms. Knopnik, Ms. Harris, Ms. Bioriak, Ms. Lele, Mr. Blood, Mr. Shalante, Mr. Bocaze, Mr. Gaynor, Ms. Andalaro, Ms. Schneider, Señorina De Cesaro, and Mr. Gazer, just to name a few, from a very long list. Although they each had their own style of teaching, they shared the same passion for teaching all students to the best of their ability, no matter what the circumstance may have been. Today, our students are blessed with many great educators as well. If I may just name a few from a list that is rather large as well. Teachers like Ms. Negron, Ms. Venditti, Ms. Dulles, Ms. Chiquini, Ms. Kell, Mr. McDevitt, Ms. Commines, Ms. Delago, the Jaegers, and Ms. Coonright. The list truly goes on for miles. These teachers have set the bar pretty high for the future teachers that may come into our district. I have no problem, as you all know, saying that if you want the most diverse, well-rounded, with a little bit of everything education, our district has a lot to offer from A to I have a couple people that I would like to take some time to thank. I would like to thank Ms. Marco. Every Superman needs a Lois Lane, and you have been my Lois Lane. You let me know when I'm not being transparent enough. You let me know when, what am I really trying to say? You let me know, good job as well. You promote our district, and you do a hell of a job, and I thank you for being there for the Daily Journal, and for really South Jersey, because I think you're all over the place now. Mr. DeSanto, I thank you for giving me the rubber leash. Because God knows, I teetered on that ethical line many times, but you allowed me to be me. And it was never really about me, it was about what was best for everyone. But I thank you for always being there, when I was right, when I was wrong, when I was somewhere in the middle. It's been a pleasure, and thank you. Ms. Salerno, a lot of this stuff tonight, the behind-the-scenes stuff, I drove you crazy with the last couple weeks. You miraculously pulled this stuff together while trying to be the secretary to the most important position in the district. But I have to say something, a couple years back, you taught me one of my best lessons learned as a person and a board member. You taught me the meaning of feelings. We know what we're talking about, and I thank you for that. Ms. Burke, you're not here this evening, but you are everything that I would want to see in an administrator. The heart is good, the mind is strong, the person is great. People that are looking to get into administrative roles, that's the mentor you wanna find, that's the one you wanna be like. Ms. Quinn, my friend forever, a voice of logic, you know so much about education, you were able to pick up that phone and say, "Hey, back off. You don't know what it's really like." You educated me, you helped me, you're my friend. Thank you. Someday, you will be a superintendent, guaranteed. It's in you. Sensual administration. I don't really like to say any team's better than another team, because we all have our strengths and weaknesses, but since I've been here, the team that Dr. Gruccio has assembled has been the most consistent, hard-working team that this district's had in quite some time. Mr. Frye, you're young, you're aggressive, I've known you a long time. Your ultimate goal and your main job is to be ahead of the curve. You never wanna be the one behind the curve. Your vision is so what we needed here, and I thank you for that. Mr. Francio Pani, I knew you were the real deal, not only do you look a lot like me, but let me tell you something. You bring the experience of what real school districts did struggle, the area of Philadelphia. You wanna talk about layoffs and school closings? Talk to this man, let him educate you. So when he comes to a place like Vineland, he's nothing like but an asset for us. Thank God he came back after that second and third meeting, because that showed me this guy's got guts, and I thank you for that. Ms. Haley, you had a vision when you got here. The finances drive the bus of a school district. Without the finances, nothing happens. And you assembled yourself a strong team. You are also the board secretary. The respect we share for each other, when it comes to the hard work and the dedication, really is so much more than just what the people see here, it's the 11:30 and the quarter-to-12 at night emails back and forth. Because that's when we get our jobs done, and that's when we have some downtime that we can really get down to business. I thank you for the staff you put together, the clean audits, and things like that. You are definitely a diamond. The Grim Reaper, better known as Dr. Rossi. I call him the Grim Reaper, because when you're in the HR position, if you're doing your job correctly, nobody likes you, because he's calling you to the carpet. Something that has been needed in this district a long time. Don't change, continue to be who you are. And thank you. Dr. Gruccio, we have spent the last two years as a team together. I probably have spoken to you more in two years than I have my wife in 24. Your heart is good as gold. Your passion for the students is 100 times more than mine, and everyone knows how mine is. We talked about the strategic plan, a foundation. You so get it, and it's good. Things that I like about you the most, we have some verbal... I'm only half-Italian, you're 100%, and it's like a love-hate relationship. We go in there, kinda hating each other, but we walk out of there loving each other, with a lot of buffer from Rossini, of course, but realistically, our hearts are in the right place, and sometimes, how we get there are different. My goal was always the business mentality, and the business mentality and the educational mentality, I so want them to mesh together, but it is kinda like oil and water, and I do understand it after this time. I just thank you for giving me the knowledge that was needed, and I thank you for the comments like, "They'll have to drag me out of here," because you totally, you believe that you're the right one. And like Coach Russo, 24/7, that's huge, and I thank you.
Thank you.
It's been great serving with you. Mr. Weaver, probably my best friend in the district. Why? Because what do I know? I know maintenance, man. I know maintenance. You run your department as if your name's on the side of the truck. You are an asset to this district. The day when you're gone, you have good people under you, but you never can kinda replace the original. I think you knew you had your hands full early on when that thing called the District LRFP came out. And I remember you casually came up to the podium, and, "Does anyone have any questions or comments?" And I believe you almost turned around before I said, "Well, it just so happens I do." So you turned back around, and you said, "You do." Crazy enough, as thick as that is, I read it cover to cover. And you have educated me on the importance of the SDA, the DOE, those darn acronyms that are a mile long. Without them, and the great relationship that you have built, along with Dr. Gruccio, it would never happen. The projects we've been involved in, great stuff, all for what's better and best for our students. There's been some question marks along the way, but you know what? Hey, for the most part, everybody has questions, but the product that you put out there is like a business. So that glema hope that I need, business versus education, bam, I know you have it. And I thank you for your friendship, your honesty, and your integrity. Thank you. I'm gonna wrap up here a little bit. My fellow board members from the past, Ron Franceschini, Tom Alrich, Pat Phillips, Frank DiGiorgio, Suzanne Morello, Alan Minune, Eugene Medio, Carlos Mercado, Rick Baro... DiGiorgio, Suzanne Morello, Alan Minune, Eugene Medio, Carlos Mercado, Rick Baruffi, and Anthony Fanucci. It was a pleasure to serve with each of you. I've learned a lot from each of your styles. We may have disagreed, but I learned. I love to listen, I love to learn, I love to educate myself. Each one of you, in your own style, taught me something, and it's stuff that I will take with me past my board days. To my fellow 2016 Vineland Board of Education members, I usually call you Mr. or Mrs., but tonight, it's gonna be by your first names, because we are family. Inez, your legal background, your passion for special needs with the knowledge that you have and the passion for the arts is something I admire. Continue to carry that passion and torch and make it happen. Don't ever let them say no. Fight, 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 and you will be fine. Chris, KOB Jennings, I always talk to you like a brother. It was never personal. We agree, we disagree, but at the end of the day, we're both board members, one vote each. I asked you, "What are you interested in here? What do you like?" You like facilities. So you know what? That's what I let you run with, and you're doing a great job with it. Your knowledge with the facilities over the next few years with Mr. Weaver are key, because we have buildings that are in need of some serious help. Is it time, possibly, to close a building and consolidate? Who knows? The money's not flowing like it used to. So with your leadership with the facilities, combined with Mr. Weaver, a lot of tough decisions have to be made, but I know you're the man for the job, and I thank you. I apologize if I'm going over, but it's, this is me. Take it or leave it.
We all lost.
Ah, that's it. Joe, security, safety, you're the bulldog. You know what the bulldog? Relentless. When you have an idea, it's not personal, it's about what's right for the students. You're an asset to this board because, I don't know that there's no in your vocabulary. If it is, you don't like to swallow it too often. So I admire what you bring to the table, your honesty, your integrity, the police background. It's the total package for what we need when it comes to making our schools safe for our students and staff. I thank you for that. Jeff, the newbie, in one year, first of all, I've never had anybody say, "I wanna be the delegate." But you wanted to be the delegate, so that shows me this guy's hungry. He wants to be the best, and that's a great characteristic to have. You have done, what you have done in one year, really took me six to eight months to try and fathom. You just dove right in. That water could've been 30 degrees, you didn't care, you went in. It's a great quality to have. Mr. Dwinney mentioned the word turf, and you're this grant guru now, which I love. You might be the board member that turfs that field through a grant. I challenge you for that, and I think you can have it, make it happen, and I thank John, you're absolutely right. We met at the end of my driveway. I had no idea what the hell I was getting myself into. So I said, "Help me. Bring me a tape. Bring me a tape of a meeting. Bring me a tape of a forum. Please." I didn't know if you would show, I didn't know, but you did. So I knew from that point on, I got a God that's thinking like I am, or he's awful curious. Either way, I build a friendship that is one that will last long past this board. Your knowledge with communications and your expertise with public relations is what this board needs. So take that skill and take it to the next level and make this board public moon. I thank you for the qualities you have. Kim, as a board president and as a board member, you always have to look for someone that works harder than you or will outwork you. And I believe I found it. Things got a little hectic in my business, and I also knew I wasn't coming back on the board, so I leaned on somebody that would go to every event. I found that person in you. You have a passion for the students, their success, that is far bigger than what I have. You have the motherlike instincts that kick in with every kid in this district. That's something that I don't have. You have the ability to lead. You're honest, and you're the total package. So continue to give those skills like you do, meeting after meeting, phone call after phone call, whatever, event after event. I thank you for what you bring to the table. Damaris, I had two choices when I got on the board. It was, I got sworn in. My choices were, I had Fanucci to the left, or this lovely woman, Damaris, to the right. I'm always partial to the women a little bit, so no disrespect to Anthony, but hey, Damaris, we hit it off like from day one. We share the same passion for all students. It doesn't matter what language they speak, what color their skin is. We have that passion for what is best for every student. You educated me along the way with some pretty interesting things. I knew that when you spoke, there was something behind it, so everyone better listen. And when you spoke, it was nothing but the truth. Sometimes the truth hurts a lot of people, but I respect the truth. I love the truth. Congratulations on expecting again as well. You will be a great mother once again. I must tell you, I remember the first big vote in April. It was that darn sedexo budget thing, and I was a brand-new board member. I didn't have a chance to read this one-inch-thick stack. Sure enough, what do I do? I just vote no. And when I voted no, of course Anthony, he says, "Oh dude, you should've voted yes." Then I look over at Damaris, and Damaris is like, "You did the right thing. You didn't have the proper information in time." And from that point on, we just hit it off. It was like, it was a great relationship. It's a friendship that is gonna be one that we have for years. We'll watch our kids grow and laugh, and hey, hopefully have a good life together. So thank you for the friendship, the honesty, and the passion. And Brian.
Superman.
Brian tells some of the stories. He's really a teddy bear, to be honest with you. He doesn't scare me one bit, nor does he ever. But he left out one key component when he gave me that speech. You only meet a couple hours a day, twice a month. You can't beat it. It's simple math, like Budget for Dummies that we all went through, right? Simple math. 12 months in a year, two meetings, that's 24 times. Boy, did he get me hook, line, and sinker. And thank you. I'm glad that you did, because I will miss this tremendously. Thank you for being my best friend, my fellow board member, our financial guru, and boy, talk about big shoes to fill. Good luck, whoever's got those shoes, for sure. And finally, my family, my kids Nicholas and Nina, and my wife Anita. Thank you for allowing me to do something that I felt was so needed. I'm your husband, and I'm the father of two great kids, but I also was the father for 11,000 other kids that needed me at that time, and other people that would call me with issues. I apologize for not being there when I was needed most, but I also thank you and Anita for doing the job of a husband and a wife. I know that dreaded honeydew list Brian's talking about. I know you're chomping at the bit, so I'm eager to start chopping away at it. With that being said, I have one last thing that I will be reading to each one of my board members. One thing I've learned over the years is ethics and boardsmanship. And yes, I've learned how to tightrope and balance the line. I came up with the Vineland Board of Education Ten Commandments. They're not etched in stone, and they didn't come down from a mountain, but I'm gonna give them to you right now, and I have some copies for each one of you. And I can only hope that future board members and board members that sit here now will follow these. Commandment number one, fight for what is best for all students and fair for all taxpayers. Number two, number two, it should never be me, always we. Remember, there is no I in VBOE. Number three, listen to what someone has to say, but never assume or commit your answer until you do the homework and know all the facts. Number four, treat people the way you like to be treated. Number five, never, and I mean never, leave a board meeting wishing you would have said or should have said something. Number six, be an independent thinker versus a rubber stamper. Number seven, be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Number eight, lead by example. Number nine, when making a decision, it should never be personal. So leave your agenda and personality in the parking lot. And finally, my favorite, number 10, CCT, Communication, Collaboration, and Transparency. Continue to practice this, and you can't go wrong. I did make copies in case you guys wanna hang it over your bed or put it by your office desk. So you know, or you know where to find me, I'll get them. But in all seriousness, it's truly been an honor, and I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve as a member of the Vineland Board of Education. Happy holidays to all. And for the last time, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Summum.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good evening.